Good evening and welcome to this meeting of Garrett Park Town Council for Monday, February 12th, 2024. All this meeting's order of time is 7:32. You have in front of you the agenda for tonight's meeting. Are there any changes even to make? And for those who are just listening, we have present in person, we have two council members, and then virtually, we have Lisa Max, who is with us from the Bahamas, and we have Todd Eisenstadt.
Yeah, he just said that they were, they're just, they're just, they're just taking off, and he will have to wait till we reconnect to Wi-Fi.
Okay, so Todd will be possibly joining us, but we do have a forum. So are any changes to the agenda?
No changes.
No changes? Okay, so with no changes, we, we consider the agenda approved as presented. Also in front of you are the minutes from the January 8th, 2024 Town Council meeting. Are there any changes to those? We've had those and had the chance to look at them previously.
No changes.
Okay. With no changes, the minutes are approved as presented. Let's see, are there any residents who wish to make presentations? Okay, well, let's move on then. The Town Manager's Report and the January Financial Report. Town Manager Barb Matthews, please.
You guys are faster than I was expecting.
That turned efficiency.
I know. I'll start off with the, the financial report. I did just want to note for the record that the January report does incorporate the modifications that you all approved in ordinance number 2023-5. And as you undoubtedly recall, that ordinance modified how certain capital projects are funded. So this is the first report you've seen where those changes are incorporated because the ordinance didn't go into effect until January 1st. I won't belabor this because we've talked about it on many occasions before, but obviously, income tax and investment revenues are running higher than budgeted, and we'll be talking about that later in the meeting. I did want to note under other receipts, which is account 5.4, that we have received what we believe will be our last COVID reimbursement payment through the state. And that payment was in the amount of, excuse me, $3,362.46. We were able to recoup 5% of our administrative contractual expenses that we incurred just going through the reimbursement process with MEMA. Also, just wanted to take this opportunity to thank our town residents, who generously donated a total of $2,815 to the Holiday Fund for the key sanitation crew, members who are assigned to Garrett Park. We should have that, that gift distributed to them within the next week or so. I think, as everyone recalls, we had kind of some back-to-back snowstorms the week of January 15th. So as you probably noted in the financial report, we have essentially expended what we have budgeted for staff overtime, as well as our contractual snow plowing assistance. The certain expenses, specifically many, many pallets of ice melt basically had to be replenished after the various storms. Those expenses were put on a credit card, so they will not show up until your February report.
Then we're going to compensate for the fact that we're almost out of money in that light item, you know?
But in such event, that you'll be considering later. Relative to 11321 Kennelworth Avenue, which is the former Yendel property, we are in the process, hopefully before the end of this month, we'll have a firm quote for the removal of non-native shrubs, also some bamboo eradication. Phil Norman, our consulting arborist, recently visited the property and did notice that there is a tree that is leaning over in a budding property owner's home. And so he has also asked for pricing for removing that tree. A town hall renovation, I think, is, we've talked about before, we did file initial paperwork back in December to request state funding in the amount of $750,000 through the Legislative Bond Initiative Program, which is a program through the General Assembly. On January 25th, I did receive a request from Delegate Solomon's Office to complete the required fact sheet and to submit that paperwork to the Department of Legislative Services. That has now been done. So we're kind of now in a wait-and-see mode to wait and see how the legislature responds to our request.
Right. In terms of where things are with, with the architects, they, we gave them a couple of months ago.
Right.
Where are we in terms of getting back from them?
That information was received and basically distributed to the council via email within the last week. I also distributed the cost estimate from Axios based on those drawings. So, you know, I say we're just kind of in a wait-and-see mode. I did want to mention, I had a conversation earlier today with one of our former elected officials who happened to be in Annapolis lobbying on a totally different matter, saw our delegation, and he dropped by this morning just to share with me that he, he was encouraged by his conversation with them. So time will tell. We should know something, obviously, this session ends in just a little over two months. Lisa, did you have a question? I thought I saw you raise your hand.
Yeah, on the bottom, I think it's the COVID funds. There's a 235, about 235,000 negative number in red. I think it's under Town Hall, and I was just wondering, is that the money that we've expended for other things that we're going to recuperate? I wasn't sure what that was.
The 243,000 that's in red and bracketed, Lisa, yes, that was basically, we, if you remember, kind of call it like the switcheroo we did in Budget Amendment Number One. So that's basically showing that money was removed from the Town Hall account in, under ARPA to other projects, and then the same amount was credited to the Town Hall account that's non-ARPA funding. So it was a total wash.
That's what I thought. I just wanted to make sure. Thank you.
On the Town Office, I think, as you likely recall, we had a flurry of work in very late December, and then this was a work that we did that was not required to get a permit for. We subsequently found out that the Department of Permitting Services was requiring detailed drawings that had an original seal and signature of a Maryland-registered architect or a professional engineer. George Miller and I talked to a couple of our local engineers who basically suggested that we go back to Wedeman, who had done the drawings back in the early 2000s for the Penn Place renovation, because they already had existing CAD drawings that they could draw upon. So the request from Department of Permitting Services, those detailed stamped drawings were filed by our general contractor, Turnkey Properties, on February 5th, 2024. So we are waiting to hopefully get approval from DPS so we can resume work on the Town Office renovation.
Do we have a price for the drawings from Wedeman for the?
For? It was done on an hourly basis, Lisa, based on their contracted rates for Town Hall, just because it was really difficult to know exactly what DPS was going to require. But I'll share that information with you. We have not yet been billed for it.
Okay, thank you.
Kind of moving along, on January 30th, I did file the Historic Area Work Permit Application for the Waverly Sidewalk Project. Basically, we were required to get Historic Area Work Permit due to the widening of the sidewalk, as well as the removal of trees. As you all likely recall, Phil Norman, dear, once again, our arborist, for those who don't know him, had indicated that the trees will not survive the construction process. To the best of my knowledge, our application is scheduled to be considered by the County Historic Preservation Commission on February 21st. I did send an email to the staff member assigned to our application just to confirm that. I'll let you know if anything changes. We will need to secure Historic Area Work Permit for the installation of lighting along the stretch of sidewalk, and we'll file that application once you all have selected a fixture. I know that's on your agenda to discuss later this evening. I did just want to mention, relative to the initial Historic Area Work Permit Application that is currently pending with the commission, you all received, I believe it was later in the day on Friday, or Friday evening, kind of a copy of what our Historic Preservation Commission submitted to County Historic Preservation Commission. One of the issues, they were generally supportive of the application, but they did flag for the County Historic Preservation Commission staff that they had some concerns of the slight curvature that was put in the alignment. So at this juncture, there's nothing we need to do, there's nothing you all need to do. That issue will be resolved by the County Historic Preservation Commission.
So, just a question on that specific piece. So that means that we won't need to do a new set of drawings right now? Because we did put some S-curves, I thought, into the thing.
It was. The county staffer did not ask me any questions about that at all. They had followed up on a couple of things, but certainly the fact that our own Historic Preservation Commission had some reservations about the curvature. You know, we'll have to see what direction the county staff takes it in.
Should, do we want to be preemptive, do you think? Or, because I'm just trying to think of, it's going to delay it, that's all.
I don't think it'll delay it. What I would expect is if the County Historic Preservation Staff has any reservations about the curvature, I think what they would likely do is to, and I can confirm this tomorrow, like I say, I'm waiting to hear back from the staff member who's assigned to our application, but my guess would be that they would, you know, like, they will conditionally approve Historic Area Work Permit, sometimes with certain changes, and if they have any reservations about this, that's what I would assume they would do. But I can check, double-check that tomorrow when I hear from them.
Yeah, great.
And then in terms of, if we want to consider making the change from the S-curve to more of a C-curve, as HPC recommended, that would require some additional work with the engineers.
Correct.
But shouldn't slow us down?
I don't think it would slow us down substantially. I have forwarded our Historic Preservation Commission's communication to County HPC, to Clark Azar, just to flag for him that there is a potential for a change. You know, I told him, at this point, there's nothing he needs to do. We just need to wait and see how County HPC responds. And then lastly, I just wanted to take this opportunity to publicly thank George Miller and Frank Brazil. Obviously, the week of January 15th was an incredibly long couple of days for them with, you know, snowstorms that were only a couple of days apart. They put in an incredible amount of hours, and while they were certainly compensated for that, they had to be pretty much running on empty by the time that week was over. So I did just want to acknowledge their hard work. And that concludes my report, unless there's any questions from anyone.
I have one question. Barb, on the financial report under the reserve, it's the last page, there's an indication of an additional allocation of 120,000. Could you remind us what that is?
Sure, and that's actually mentioned in the Budget Amendment later. This was what we anticipated to be received for highway user revenue and Verizon franchise PEG grants, this is the public access channel, or it has, both of uses are restricted. Because we have the ARPA funding, I've had no indication from the council at this juncture, and I'm not planning on it, that we would be using highway user funds for any of the upcoming projects. Because those funds are restricted, they really should be swept and put into a reserve fund to ensure that they're only used for the purpose that they legally can be. And the same thing for, is the same restrictions somewhat apply for the Verizon PEG funds. They also have very specific uses.
Okay, so when you actually get the funds, they'll be allocated to their specific line item?
They will be, right. So that, we are recommending a change to that line item. We'll be talking about that later. I would just mention too, that highway user funds can be reserved for up to 10 years. There is a recognition by the state and in state law that particularly for smaller jurisdictions that aren't getting significant funds every year, that there may need to be some accumulation. I'm required to file a report with the state at the end of, pretty much at the end of every calendar year. And I specifically noted, like, our 2023 funds were reserved so that the state knows what we're doing with them if they're not expended.
So is, is any of that funding, so we're one year in, there's nothing bigger than one year?
Yeah, I will. I will say the, the funds were not legally set aside in prior years. What's done is done. But yes, we only have, you know, one year of reserve. We'll have two years by the end of 2024.
Just a question along those lines. Could we use it for the nursery school, redoing the parking lot, or you think that?
It's really meant to be more roadways. Lighting of roadways is a permissible use. I mean, there's a number, then we don't run a transit system, so that takes some, you know, takes out some of the legally lawful prescribed uses. But sidewalks are, you know, is what I noted in calendar year 2022, is what we use the funds for. You can use it for certain lighting, you can use them for, you know, roadway improvement. So you can use it for paving and things like that. I think since we have the flexibility to accumulate those funds for up to 10 years, my recommendation to you all would be we use up the ARPA funds, you know, just to make sure those funds are expended.
But we could use it, for example, for the speed bump on Waymouth and the intersection improvements that we're contemplating on Argyle.
We could.
But again, we were, we were planning to use ARPA funds for those.
I understand. I don't know, I just think we ought to think about that because the, the highway user funds can only be used for certain kinds of things, and the ARPA funds, if we want them to go towards Town Hall, it's one thing to do the switcheroo so that, you know, we spend the ARPA money on current things and then move that money out of our budget, but we can't move the highway user money into our Town Hall budget. We can only put it into budget line items for roadway improvement. So I just want to make sure we're not creating things that maybe are apples.
I think we'll be okay. One of the things I was going to suggest is that you have a budget work session scheduled for February 28th. So as part of that, I was going to show you sort of what the roadway plan looks like when you look out a number of years. And I think that should help kind of prompt some discussion with you all about what you want to do. But we don't have any specific paving projects that are in the plan that Clark Azar did maybe two years ago. But certainly, within that 10-year window, there will be paving projects, but I'll have that information for you on the 28th.
Okay, did, please help me remember, did we approve the speed bump for Waymouth?
You did.
We did, and what's the schedule for that?
Right, so the, the bid package that Clark Azar is currently working on includes a number of items. I call it a mega bid prep project, but it basically is the Waverly Sidewalk, the Waymouth Speed Bump, the paving project, and the reconfiguration of the Argyle-Kennelworth intersection.
And so that will be ready?
Well, one thing we obviously need to resolve is what is the alignment of the sidewalk? It will not, if it changes, it will not be, it will not be a significant amount of work based on my communication with Jason Azar yesterday. But, you know, we do need that issue to be resolved. So the plans that are included in the bid package basically reflect what that alignment should be.
But we've been planning for this, for construction to be happening in April, May?
Probably won't be quite that soon. You know, the bid package is not out on the street. Typically, something like this would be out for probably about four weeks, and we have to hit, you know, one of your meetings for contract approval. I don't remember the exact timeframe that Jason gave me, but I think his intention was to basically say that work had to commence within, you know, 60 to 90 days after contract award, to give the contractor some flexibility of when they started and us the opportunity to notify residents that, you know, work is coming in their area.
I've got a couple of questions on some other stuff here. For the Yendel property, we're only going with Empire Landscape as a single one, as a sole source, or?
What we have found is that typically, they are the most, I mean, we have three tree service companies that are under contract. Those contracts were competitively bid and awarded back in 2021. I would just say, one of the three companies' staff has not been entirely satisfied with, based on some work they had done. And then the other company does excellent work. They just tend to be much more expensive.
And, if that makes sense. I had a couple of myer questions. Revenues, first page at the bottom, it was financial assistance.
That was, yeah, we probably should just, I've been meaning to talk to Mary about that. We can probably eliminate it. My understanding is that was, harkens back to the Safe Routes to School project. And there were some line items tied to that, that at one point were covered under that section. But that project's been closed out financially, so.
In the same, in a similar vein, we're going to get rid of the SRTS under Streets and Roads?
Yes, we can clean that up. I think, last year, I think we had some residual amount left, but we transferred that out, I believe, in the 2024 budget, might have been 2023.
And finally, I'll maybe jump in the gun on this. The investment revenues that we were fortunate enough to get, will those be included in the budget update?
They are. They're part of the Budget Amendment. I would just mention one thing about, Mary and I were talking earlier today. We'll probably also more actively invest certain funds based on projected cash flow. So that may change the number that's in the ordinance that's before you, but I want an opportunity to talk to her more about that. We had a conversation with Sandy Springbank earlier today.
Thank you.
Any other questions about the, the monthly managers' report? If not, we will move. Sure. Can you, can you come on up to the microphone? Make sure you state your name and your address.
Ken Schwartz, 10919 Claremont Avenue. If I heard Barb right, she said that the estimates have been received and drawings received from Axios and Wedeman?
Yes.
At the Town Hall, is that going to be shared with the town, or is that?
Yeah, we can, we'll get it posted to the website.
I see. Do you know when that will be done?
I can, we just need to provide them to Kayla tomorrow.
Thank you.
I had a question to, sorry, I was a few minutes late. But one of the things in the Town Manager's Report was the HOP application for Waverly. Is that, did I miss all the discussion on that, or is it going to be touched upon later?
What I was saying, Stephen, is it's really, at this point, you know, the application's been filed, and obviously, the County HPC would have received the feedback from the Garrett Park Historic Preservation Committee. I'm going to touch base with the staff member assigned to our application, but I would suspect that County HPC staff will be reviewing what we submitted, as well as what the Garrett Park Historic Preservation Committee recommended in terms of the change of alignment.
Okay, so you did get that message, yeah. I heard that in the meeting last week.
Yeah. So yeah, I think we'll just, we'll have to wait, and I don't think there's anything we need to do. I think County HPC staff will just have to weigh whether or not they're making the granting of any Historic Area Work Permit, you know, application to the town contingent upon a change of alignment or not. I think I'll see that when I see the staff report, trying to, I should hopefully hear from the staff member tomorrow, because I was asking when we would receive the staff report.
Okay.
Right now, we're on the meeting for the 21st, so we should see it soon.
Okay, yeah, if you could just let me know.
I will. Yep, I'll share that with you. I'll share it with all of you.
And you may want to ask the, you may want to ask the engineer if he can make the change of the curves in the field as opposed to re-drawing it and re-getting it?
Yeah, I did ask, yeah, I had, I forwarded it to Jason Azar yesterday, and he responded, just asking him if they had to do any redesign work, you know, just trying to get a sense of timing. He said he did not think it would be a significant amount of time to change the drawing, maybe an hour. We just need to get back into their work queue. But since, I don't think, Lisa, we need to do anything in the field. Since the bid is not out on the street, I think they could just make that change on the drawings fairly easily.
So the bid is out on the street?
It is not out on the street right now.
It may actually help to get it in there, because it would be, if you, if you had a straighter line and you changed it to curves, the price would go up. You may not see it reverse, but it may, it may affect. So if that becomes the final plan, that would.
Yeah, well, the part of what is slowing down or getting, well, I don't know slowing down, but, but preventing that big package from being put out on the marketplace, then maybe that's something that we need to determine sooner rather than later.
Yeah, I don't think it's really holding it up. I mean, I will, you know, be honest. They, they have sent me a number of drawings that I still have to look at. And then they're working on sort of the larger kind of narrative bits, technical specifications, in addition to the drawings. I have not yet seen that. I know they're working on it, so I don't think, you know, we're having an HPC, County HPC meeting a week from Wednesday, I believe, is when it's occurring. So I don't think there'll be any substantive delay either way. We'll just have to wait.
But then he would have to discuss whether to make that, whether authorize.
Well, I think the way to think about it is ultimately, I think, the County Historic Preservation Commission, since they are issuing, the ones issuing the Historic Area Work Permit that we need to even go forward, I think the alignment will be determined by the County Historic Preservation Commission, not us at this juncture, yeah.
Even if it changes, it's probably not significant, but cost difference, but.
Yeah, I don't think it'll be a big cost difference. I mean, I did get some follow-up questions after submitting the, the application, but none of them had anything to do with the alignment. So I don't, my sense, because I didn't ask a question about it, was that that probably wasn't as much on their radar screen. But I think the fact that our Historic Preservation, our own Historic Preservation Commission had reservations about the alignment that's depicted will, will trigger a review on the county planning staff's part.
Yeah, okay. Thinking probably about bringing it back to what it was, I think, to begin when we first started.
Yeah, I think we very might be, Phil.
I, I do have a follow-up question. I had meant to ask it in Ken's question, it reminded me that I didn't ask it. So what are our next steps for the Town Hall renovation?
So at, at the moment, I mean, I hadn't thought too much about it because sort of determining whether, what proceeding kind of depends on if we're getting money from the state. I mean, not 100%, but, you know, to a good extent, no? I mean, like, we, we need to be looking at it, we need to know what it is, but, but if it's.
It's going to be more than our budgeted amount, even with ARPA money. So it's a matter of, you know, bridging that gap, I would think. It's pretty common, that's kind of a project, and I guess.
So you're suggesting we wouldn't take any further steps until we hear back from the state?
What would you?
So it's the, so for example, Wedeman Architects, are they waiting for further direction from us? Have they provided everything that we have asked them to provide?
They, yes, they have. You know, we're probably roughly about two months out from knowing. I mean, I did check in with Delegate Solomon's Office probably a couple of weeks ago, and they said, look, we're kind of in, you know, wait-and-see mode, because obviously, the legislative session is still ongoing. You know, I don't know if we'll be able to hit this deadline, and it's even hard to know what to ask for, but the federal, I had a thing from Van Hollen and Carden's office are jointly sort of managing the applications for federal earmark funding. And basically, that's coming up pretty fast. It's on March 8th, so I need to just kind of see what's involved in that.
Okay, well, so I was assuming, and I still assume, but maybe I shouldn't assume, that at our budget work session that we're planning before we do our FY '25 budget, that we would consider this project and how much money we would want to allot to it in the next year's budget based on the estimates. So it seems to me that that would be our next step, to take this up during the budget work session and maybe set some, set some priority parameters in terms of, that's, you know, how much money we want to set aside for our own funding, or maybe set aside some strategies. Or if we don't get state funding, what other options do we have to pursue, and how would we pursue them?
Right, yes.
I just wanted to make sure that we weren't just waiting on the state, which we have no control.
We don't.
Sounds like it's hopeful that we might get answers from the state, but not for sure. But by the time, by the time we finish the budget process.
Right, but not before the budget.
Yeah, right. I, I think, just kind of eyeballing the timing, and just based on my conversation with Delegate Solomon's Office, I don't think we'll really know anything until towards the end of the legislative session. All the, the fact sheets, which are a required part of the bond bill process, I know they, they gave a later date, but when I got the notification from Delegate Solomon's Office, I had five days to do it, which included, they were calendar dates, including a weekend. It seemed like there might have been some extension beyond that for other people. I'm not quite sure why. But I believe, as I'm going off memory here, that they were saying that all the fact sheets had to be in by, like, early March, which was a much further out deadline than I was given. And if you didn't meet that date, then basically, your application was no longer under consideration. So that kind of suggests to me that the last roughly 30, 45 days of the session is where a lot of the legislative bond bill decisions will be hashed out. I mentioned, Stephen, I think it was before you were in, one of our former elected officials was in Annapolis lobbying on a different matter of kind of personal interest, not something related to the town, happened to be meeting with our delegation, just by happenstance, made a comment about the Town Hall project, and he dropped in this morning to say that at least he, he felt like he walked away from that meeting suggesting that the delegation would push rather hard, that we get something. But what, what does, you know, what is something? I think is the big question mark. So I think to Gerald Lee's point, I think we can, what I can probably do for the budget work session is just run a couple of different scenarios in terms of what happens if we get zero funding, what happens if we get this, and you, we can kind of talk through what you might want to do. And you, we can kind of talk through what you might want to do in terms of how do you fill the gap? But yeah, at this point, there's nothing, Wedeman. They've fulfilled their contract. I mean, obviously if we had a question, you know, they would be there to support us, but there's really nothing they can do for us right now either.
Okay, thank you. I could be in Annapolis the end of the month. Like, I'll actually leave after the budget work session to go there for the, the Maryland Mayor's Association meeting. And so we, we do lobby. We are, we are going to be at the Capitol as part of that. So I will get another opportunity to shake the tree a little, see if any money comes out. Shake well.
Will there be another public comment session or are we done with that?
I mean, I think we need to, we'll need, I mean, we'll need to discuss. You know, once we know what the options are in terms of how much of a gap, what the various options are for, for bridging the gap. And we'll definitely have to, have to discuss that.
How about as far as the floor plan goes?
No, I don't, I mean, only to the extent that if we get very little money and the gap is bigger than we're comfortable with and we have to go back to the drawing board, but there's not, I mean, they've given us the fourth option. They've given us the thing that we compromised or worked together to, to, to synthesize. I don't know if I'm using the words here, but so that's, I think at this point, it's either to take it or leave it somewhat, but also if there's less money or if we don't want to spend the amount that it's going to cost and we have to start scaling back. And that's the, that's kind of the only decision point, I think.
Well, there were some options that we asked the contractor, the, the architects to provide and cost out. So there are other decisions to be made.
But not necessarily in terms of floor plan. They were.
No, but some related to like the basement and things like that, right?
I think that. The, the basement was was not part of concept four. That was the decision you made back in December. So that was not priced. That's, that's, that's already, yeah. They had, they had, you can pretty much back into it because I, I mean, it's not a super precise number, but probably close enough. If you think about Wedeman's original option three and option four, they're fairly similar, but for the basement. So you can kind of extrapolate that out in terms of what the basement was costing.
But we do have a crawl space in the numbers.
There is, yeah, conditioning the crawl space.
Crawl space now.
That doesn't do any.
Well, I'm not, I would just pause it without having looked very closely at what we'd have been provided back. But if I remember right, there were some things they had provided in their last conceptual drawings that we all we, we gave kind of general direction to address, for example, the ADA drinking fountain. So it just seems like we ought to have an opportunity to decide if we like what they gave us back or not, or want to go with those designs. I don't think we, by asking them to do option four, that we had made a final decision that that was the floor plan that we were accepting. That was, that was not my memory before we voted up at the time.
It's very normal process that you'll do, like they're doing a schematic level now. They did a concept level before, so schematic level will be up to like, say, thirty, thirty-five percent. It's not common. It's, it's a definite that they're going to get comments from wherever their client agency is. And in this case, it may be all of us. It may be like just the town office, but it's, I'm going to say it's highly unusual. I don't think I've ever worked on a public project and been doing them for close to thirty years where the general public is commenting a floor plan. It's just very strange, but things aren't always normal in this town, so. But yeah, I guess.
So then let's, let's plan to make sure that we're talking about this soon after the budget work session so that we can, you know, make sure that Barb's got the right numbers for, for budget planning purposes, but also just so that we can keep things moving and have a game plan for, once we hear back about the, the state and federal grants.
Yeah, that makes sense. I mean, so if we, Barb already committed to posting the, the drawings and the estimates, right? Whether we solicit or not, we will get comments from the public.
Yeah.
And then if we had this on our March agenda to either approve or ask for any changes to the drawings, you know, that would help us to sort of set, this is what we're, we're basing our budget decisions on, et cetera, right?
Yes, my one hesitation, my one hesitation is that we're working with significant unknowns and having additional.
Understood. I mean, I, I think we, well, we can kind of wait and see, but what we hear, but it would be nice, I think, for us to go ahead and make that decision that this is our ideal decision of a floor plan. We could always caveat it with, if we're not able to assemble the appropriate budget, then we will reconsider the floor plan as necessary within how many other months or whatever.
Gotcha.
Yeah, so you're thinking more of like it has to be trimmed back, I guess. Yeah, our ideal floor plan is probably six million dollars, but.
Fair, fair. Our optimized, optimized floor plan.
Our achievable floor plan. And I guess I probably should clarify a little bit, like it's not, it's not when, public projects like this, it's not as though that they're not shown to the public and obviously the public can always send a message as they wish and maybe a lot of times there might be like a gem of a suggestion or a thought in it, but it's not normal to have like the, the review done by like the public at large. So I just can't like this. It's a little bit extreme here, I think, compared to things I've seen elsewhere, so.
We're still moving ahead and this is, uh, this is further than it's ever been before and.
Yeah, that's good. Yeah, yeah.
So.
Yeah, not saying turn back.
Any other questions for Barb or about the town manager report? Are we ready to move on to the action items? Okay, all right. The time is eight oh eight. Town manager Matthew received engagement letter for.
Sure. As you all know, we are required both by state law and by the town charter to have a independent financial audit at the end of every fiscal year. I'm seeking your authorization tonight to execute the attached engagement letter with SB and Company for performance of the FY 2024 audit. The associated fee is thirteen thousand eight hundred dollars. Did want to note, this will be a one-year engagement. We will be issuing a request for proposals for years beyond the FY 2024 audit, but I think at this juncture, given everything else that's on staff's plate, it makes sense to stay with S, S, SB and Company for another year.
Any questions about this engagement letter or?
Okay, two quick ones. Is, is this the same firm that did it the last time?
Yes, it is.
Cool. And the other thing was, I noticed it said there was an estimated fee of thirteen eight. Would you want any more money so we don't have to fiddle around?
No, I mean, I appreciate that, Phil, but I think it'll be fine. They've always come in right at what they've quoted.
Okay.
Quick question. How does this price compare to last year's price for the same audit?
It's within a couple hundred dollars. I don't have the exact fee in front of me, but I know it was somewhere in the thirteen thousand. I think it was like about thirteen six, thirteen five.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Are we up for a motion to execute?
I'll move to execute the authorization.
Oh, second.
Those in favor?
All approved. Aye.
That's everyone. Let's see, next item. The contract award for the community center drainage and site improvements.
Yes, we haven't talked about this project for a while, so as you likely recall, though, we have a lease with the Garrett Park Nursery School, Inc. For the property. Under the terms of the lease, we are responsible for a one-time replacement of certain items, including an asphalt path. When you all discussed this project, I know it goes back to at least twenty twenty-three. It might even go back as far as the latter part of twenty twenty-two. You all had some discussions and elected to kind of expand the project to make some improvements beyond the asphalt path that was the initial concern. Expenses we've incurred to date have included a boundary and topographical survey. As part of this project, additional repairs beyond the path were identified as well as the need to do some stormwater drainage improvements. Basically, there's some water going from the property onto property owned by Holy Cross. One of the things that's to lead this project is we are connecting to a MCPS storm drain facility, so we needed to get their approval and that took a little while to obtain. And talking to Clark Azar about this project, they did not believe the project would attract a lot of bidders, just given that it's a relatively small project in the grand scheme of things. And they had recommended to me back in twenty twenty-three that we ride a competitively awarded time and materials contract that's been established with Montgomery County. I subsequently reached out to DNF Construction. This name may sound familiar to some of you. They were the contractor for the stormwater improvements along Roca Bee. They were also the contractor that, that the twenty twenty-two sidewalk improvements. So we have had a relationship with this firm before and we've been pleased with their work in the past. So I reached out to them to get a price quotation for the site and drainage improvements. As part of that, there were certain drawings that were prepared by Clark Azar that were shared with DNF Construction. As you'll note in your packet, DNF submitted two separate price proposals, which basically ties into the way the drawings were prepared. One was for drainage improvements. And the other price quotation was for the site improvements. Copies of both of those proposals are in your agenda packet. Both price proposals are unit priced. We will only be invoiced for the quantities actually used and the work completed. Each of those pricing proposals includes a ten percent contingency amount. Included in your agenda packet is a description of the work that will be performed under both scopes of work. The drainage improvements component of the project has an associated price of forty-seven thousand, three hundred and twenty-five dollars and fifty-eight cents. That price does include the ten percent contingency I mentioned. The site improvement pricing is forty-four thousand, eight hundred and fifty-six dollars and thirty-five cents. That also includes a ten percent contingency. One thing I did want to mention is that in discussing the price proposals with Clark Azar, we had some back and forth with DNF Construction. Their pricing proposals include certain items that we don't believe will be necessary. For example, traffic control. Right now, the plan is to have this work performed the week of spring break. So both the nursery school and the elementary school are closed. If that is in fact the case, and there's obviously no need for traffic control. So Clark Azar believes that the final project cost will be less than the combined cost of both of these proposals, which is ninety-two thousand, one hundred and eighty-one dollars and ninety-three cents. I am seeking, however, you know, your concurrence to spend up to that amount as part of the contract award, should it be necessary. I did want to note that as things stand right now, there is only, there's insufficient funding in the community center capital budget account. So if we do get to that outer limit of roughly ninety-two thousand, two hundred dollars, there would need to be an additional allocation of twenty-nine thousand, nine hundred and forty-eight dollars and that will be an issue you will take up later in your meeting as part of your consideration of budget amendment number two. I know Phil and I texted earlier today. He's got a, a copy of the plans. I have them as well. Phil, is there anything you wanted to add? Because I know you've been very involved in this project as well.
The only thing, and you and I talked about this, but I guess if you feel comfortable with it, I'm fine, but was about the fact that he may or may not have included flexipave in the original stuff because it looked like he didn't. But then you said that he was able to get it in the ten, in the ten percent contingency, but I'm always a little concerned about burning the contingency
Yeah.
before we start the program.
Yeah, so one of the issues that Phil and I were communicating about earlier today was just the, there's a very large tree, as you all undoubtedly recall, near the playground. Back in, I think it was probably December or January, Jason Azar and I met on site with Brian Compton from DNF Construction. Certainly the, you know, the tree and trying to protect it was part of that discussion. Phil, Phil reminded me as we were talking about this today, it just flagged my memory that Brian had told us he was still waiting on a formal proposal for the permeable paving at the tree. But suggested that that cost would probably be in the area of forty-three hundred dollars. And he said, as soon as he receives their formal proposal, he will amend theirs. So the cost estimates that we have does not include that forty, estimated forty-three hundred dollars. As Phil said, if everything goes well and we're able not to use flaggers and some of things, there's probably sufficient funding. But I think if you have any concerns, certainly if you want to give a little bit more flexibility from a contracting standpoint of, you know, should it become necessary of spending slightly more than the ninety-two thousand, that would be, would be fine. I, I think from just a scheduling standpoint, we really do need to hit this spring, spring break period.
Right.
To make sure that we can move this forward.
Yeah, that's going to be my question. What is the schedule? Yes, yeah, Robin Daly.
Yeah, actually, Robin. Robin and I have been in touch about, I think when you start looking at an ideal time to try to do this work where, you know, you don't have to worry about little ones running around or just conflict with parking. You know, spring break is the perfect time to, to hit it and that's what we've told DNF Construction.
And they know they're going to build this as a drawing, so. He knows he has to build it to the drawing.
He does. Those drawings were basically, he brought them out to the site with him when we met with him and he was asking some very specific questions about aspects of it.
So should we go to say a hundred thousand dollars and not to exceed?
I, I think that would, I, I don't think we'll need it, but it certainly wouldn't hurt Phil to give that contract authorization.
I'm just thinking, I just hate to, to do the contingency and next thing you know, we're having to shuffle money around for four hundred thousand dollars or something, you know, because we don't know, we don't know.
Yeah, I, I think it would probably be helpful just because since we only have, well, this month you have two meetings, but basically, we're going to start work and we're going to have to keep work going and there really is no flexibility in our code as written, as our, our code as written now for, for me to authorize change orders. So I think having some extra flexibility, while I think it may not be needed, certainly wouldn't hurt anything.
Right, okay, cool. It's in the vote.
So do you need, are we, I'm, I'm looking at the, the next item on the, on the agenda, the amended budget. And I'm not seeing it, but it's just not. Do you need us to do something now before we approve the, the contract award?
I, I don't think so. I think you're gonna have the opportunity to do something about this like momentarily. Yeah.
All right. Any other questions about awarding this contract for community center drainage and site improvements?
Are they confident they can get the whole job done during spring break?
They seem to be, yeah.
It is.
It's like seven days, seven, seven business days.
Yeah, Robin was, I'm looking at Robin. Robin was very helpful in terms of just, I know she said that the kids would probably appreciate the construction and I know what my, my niece was like when she was a little girl. She was more fascinated by a construction site in St. Louis and she was the World's Fair nineteen oh four carousel and did become an engineer ultimately, but you know, I do think it's just safer for everybody involved just to be able to not have construction going on and to give DNF just a clean slate to work from. If there are no other questions, I'll make a motion to authorize the contract with a not to exceed of a hundred thousand dollars.
I'll second that.
Those in favor?
Aye, aye.
Aye. Lisa?
Lisa, what do you think? You support the contract?
Yep.
Wonderful.
Aye. I approve. Yeah.
Oh, one last question. I assume that this can then be allotted to the ARPA funds and those budget funds could be moved to the town hall account later. There are special procurement things that kind of tie to the use of ARPA funds that were not part of this. Basically, there's certain federal prevailing wage things that come into play. So there's a, a contract addendum that should be signed. I I would probably say just leave this one in regular town funds and focus on the upcoming project, would be my recommendation.
All right, thank you.
Could I, could I make a comment?
Go for it.
Well, first of all, oh, Robin Daly, one one two one eight Kenneworth Avenue. Thank you very much. The nursery school is going to be thrilled. They're very anxious to have this done. Their regulators have been keeping a close eye on the safety and there was some concern around the sidewalk as well as the playground surface. So I appreciate whatever you can do to get this done. Something came up the other day and I didn't really think there was a role for you guys, but now that you're talking about the parking, as Barb correctly reflected, our request was mostly around the, the sidewalk, you know, getting it level, so it wasn't a tripping hazard. And we weren't too worried about the rest, that the town was worried about the parking lot. But something that came up the other day was there is an ongoing conflict between the parents at Garrett Park Elementary School and wanting to park in that area where we have preschoolers unloading. and wanting to park in that area where we have preschoolers unloading at the same time and sort of the parents at the nursery school sort of having to ward them off. And they asked me if there was something the town could do, and I didn't really see a role for the town there. But since you're talking about the parking lot, I just wanted to raise that and see if you have creative ideas.
Well, in the past, I remember when my children were there, it was a parent who sort of stood out and knew who was nursery school family and who wasn't. And just that, and, and, you know, kind of had to be the front-facing person for that.
You can equip them with an orange vest and a flag.
Yeah, that's kind of what we're doing now. I think, you know, I'm not down there, but I think there's just more parents dropping kids off. They have a new flow there at the elementary school, and there's just more cars. And I didn't see a role for the town, but I, since you're talking about the parking lot, I wanted to raise it as a, as a thought.
Yeah, you could also post a sign.
No, we have a sign. We have a sign.
There is a sign.
Okay.
Yeah.
It's been a problem with the elementary school, I think, with a lot of people not following the signs, saying you can't go northbound on Kenilworth certain times. So the, the principal literally has to stand in the street to get the cars to turn.
Yeah, he's invited me to hang out with him.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's really about the elementary school parents, but thank you. And not, and not the ones from Garrett Park, because none of us are driving there, so.
You not offer free coffee, Mayor?
I don't have coffee. It's been too cold. Frankly, I waited for it to be warmer before I, before I take him up on the offer.
Yeah.
All right, okay, next item on the agenda, the time is 8:23. Introduction of ordinance number 2024-1, Town Manager Matthews.
I think as I alluded to earlier, the FY 2024 budget was adopted on April 10th of 2023. It was subsequently amended by adoption of ordinance number 2023-5 on December 11th. As I mentioned previously, ordinance number 2023-5 modified the funding sources for certain capital projects. We now have seven months of actual financial data, which seems like it's an appropriate time for you all to review the budget and determine what kind of budget modifications you might feel are warranted. As part of that, I, I did go through each of the revenue line items, the operating expenses, the reserve summary, and the capital budget. And I'll try to briefly kind of go through what my recommended changes are. So one of the things that came up a couple of months ago, it may have been when the auditors were presenting back in December, and I can't remember which one of you raised this issue, but a question came up from one of you about the employee leave reserve. And as I mentioned, at that time, that was something that Mary Ruckey, our accountant, and I had been talking about. Currently, we have $97,713 is reserved for the payout of employee leave upon whenever those individuals separate. I am recommending that the reserve allocation for the payout of employee leave be reduced to $40,000. And I feel very comfortable in making that recommendation to you. Basically, what I looked at is who is currently on staff, what their employee leave balances are. We do have some restrictions in terms of how much leave can be carried over from one fiscal year to the next. And there are also just practical limitations on how much leave an employee can actually accrue each year. I think the one thing, and I don't have the whole history of how the roughly $98,000 was arrived at. My understanding in talking to Mary Ruckey is it may have assumed that every employee had the maximum amount of leave that they could have, and everyone sort of left on, you know, at the same time. And Phil may have some history.
I have, I can tell you exactly why we, why it went up to those huge numbers, because at the point when that was done, the concern, my concern was, and we addressed it, was that we essentially had an unfunded mandate that if, if you, if somebody left, they would end up pulling all this money out, because we had to pay for vacation, and there was no limit on the amount of vacation that you could have. And so some employees had lots of vacation. We didn't want to get caught where we couldn't do something, so we went ahead and put this big amount of money away. And I'm glad to see that you're reducing it, because it would seem to me at this point it's prudent to do so.
Yeah, the number is quite high when I look at, you know, just when people, employees started, how much leave. Been here long enough, I think I have an idea of who hoards their leave and who doesn't. And, you know, we have limits on how much leave can carry over from one fiscal year to the other. We also, I mean, obviously, the other possible exposure is an employee, an hourly employee who can accrue comp time. We set limits on that when you all updated the personnel manuals. So now we cap comp time accrual at any one time at a maximum of 40 hours. So to kind of put this in perspective, too, as part of every year's audit, one of the items that's noted is what is the value of the employee leave as of June 30th of every fiscal year? So that number as of June 30th of 2023 was $21,353. So I think leaving it at 40 is more than comfortable. Truthfully, I toyed with lowering it, but, you know, baby steps. And I, I think the other thing that, and from a budgetary standpoint is, you know, if, unless you have significant notice that an employee is leaving, inevitably, there's going to be some attrition. I mean, there's going to be a vacancy that exists for a period of time. There's a position that's budgeted to be there year-round. So I think from a budgetary standpoint, yes, there is a payout of leave potentially when someone leaves, but there's also going to be salary and benefit savings, because that position inevitably is going to be vacant for some period of time.
Well, in the pre, in the pre-restriction era, if you will, it was a big number.
I. It coincided with when we established those limits.
Right.
Yeah, I actually happened to be looking for something and came across a file from, with a very long-term employee from around that time, and some of the payouts that were kind of occurring.
Yeah, we think this about 10 years ago, yeah.
So the other, Julie had asked earlier about the $120,623 that's listed also under the reserve fund. And as I mentioned, this was a, you know, set aside for highway user revenue and Verizon Capital Pig Funds. Basically, I think that amount, just based on how those two revenue sources are trending for 2024, can also be reduced fairly substantially down to $64,537. So that the net effect of those two changes, should you choose to accept them, would be to reduce the town's reserve funds by $113,799. Obviously, if you remove those funds from reserves, then they're available for, for allocation, as you all deem appropriate. Before I move on to some of the other changes, are there any questions about the reserve changes I'm recommending? Anyone? Okay. I'm kind of moving on to revenues, and as you know, the carryover from FY 23 to 24 was budgeted at $136,000 for a variety of reasons, particularly income tax receipts and expenses coming in less than anticipated. The actual amount of carryover funding was $327,036. So what the budget amendment would do was to recognize that additional revenue and make it available for allocation. We've had a considerable conversation, I know during my tenure, about income taxes. As you likely recall, we had an incredibly high payment that we received in November of 2023. That single payment alone kind of topped some years of income taxes in the preceding five to seven years. Part of that, in all likelihood, was because there was also a reconciling distribution for, you know, prior year returns. Just as a reminder, you know, there was a suspension of enforcement during the pandemic, and also there was an extension of filing deadlines. At this juncture, based on the best information that I have, I'm recommending an increase of $230,000 in the budgeted amount for income taxes. That is largely driven by the November 2023 payment I just mentioned. We obviously have February through June that are left in this, where we actually typically receive income tax receipts. There is no normal pattern for income tax receipts. We normally, we've never in recent memory gotten a payment in the month of December. We almost never get a payment in April, and the January payment is usually minimal, only a couple thousand dollars. Which all of that makes sense, I think, when you consider what this is. It's an income tax, so everything's tied to filings. Our next largest payments coming up would be February, May, and June. So, you know, I'm recommending a $230,000 increase now. If for some reason, which I don't anticipate, something quirky happens in February, then we may need to revisit this. But what I did for the remainder of the fiscal year is I went back and looked all the way back to 2019, looked at what we have received generally from February to June. As with everything in income taxes, there's really not any discernible pattern. So I picked the lowest of the numbers that we get from February to June, and that's been added to current actual year-to-date receipts.
So are you recommending this $230,000 that we, that's the number we use in introducing this budget amendment? But then, if the numbers come back.
Yeah.
A month from now.
If February looks quirky, if February looks really quirky for some reason, yeah, then I will alert you to that. I don't anticipate that happening. But certainly, I think just recognizing there's been a lot of volatility. Minor change from the state, we get periodic updates from the Maryland Department of Transportation revising their estimate for highway user revenue, so a slight change in that. Investment revenues have obviously been far exceeding the budgeted amount, as I mentioned earlier. Mary and I are looking to possibly invest some additional funds that we don't think we'll need in the near future. We had a call with Sandy Spring Bank, so I am going to take another look at this number as you go into the second reading of the ordinance. But at this time, I'm recommending an increase of $63,000 for investment revenues. Also recommending an increase in other receipts for a number of reasons. First and foremost, we're already exceeding the budgeted amount considerably. There's a number of reasons for that one, is we sold a 2011 pickup truck, which yielded just under $17,000. We had an insurance reimbursement for around 1106. This was for, Stephen knows this painfully well. This was when a car went out of control on Strathmore and took out some light poles and pretty much ended up in his, the car ended up in his yard, I believe. And then we had, we did receive some additional reimbursement for COVID expenses beyond what I had budgeted. And we also, on an annual basis, redeem our credit card points for some cash. So I'm recommending that you adjust the budgeted amount for other receipts, which is account 5.4 by $32,000. If these recommendations are accepted, that would increase revenues by $516,830.
But we're not allocating it to anything. It's just extra money. Is that right?
Well, I have, I have a recommendation, Lisa. I'll get to that. But obviously, that's subject to what you all would like to do. But you wait, yeah, there's more. Some adjustments in expenses. One is just over time, we've already exceeded, you know, have used up what we have for the two inclement weather events in January. Based on analysis of year-to-date costs, I think you can reduce the amount in the employee benefits line item by $10,000. Recommending an increase in professional fees of $20,000. Some minor changes in the allocation for the Archives Committee and Historic Preservation Committee after touching base with Claire McDonald, as well as the Chair of the Historic Preservation Committee. In terms of account 13.5, this kind of covers a wide range of items, but I'm recommending an increase of $30,000. One is the town arborist had identified some work that he would recommend in Cambria Park, more the rear part of the property, that we would need some additional funding to do. I'd also want to make sure that there's some, there'll be some nominal funding for any emergency tree pruning or removal through June 30th. And the last item, I think Robin Daly mentioned this as a concern for the nursery school, but they had an inspection. Robin, you might have to help me with who the state regulatory agency is. I don't recall the name.
Yeah, sure. It's, it's the Maryland State Office of Childcare. The, what they refer to as the OCC.
Thank you, Robin. And then we also had an hazard assessment survey done by the local government insurance trust. They came out and basically, Kayla was their guide for the day, and went through any town-owned property, any town-owned facility. So one of the issues that came up was there is a, we've been using mulch that is coming from our, you know, mulch pile. Basically, for playgrounds, there, there are a variety of ways you can provide kind of protective surfacing, but if you're using mulch, it needs to meet certain certification standards. The alternative, which I, I am getting some pricing, just more for possible grant application purposes. Generally, when you are replacing an entire playground, is typically when you would do it, there are actually sort of rubberized surfaces. They're expensive, but there is grant funding that you can typically get for that. But they, they have a very long life. So legit, not only flagged, I think, the composition of what we were using, but also in some cases, just the depth of it. So we probably do need to invest in a different type of mulch product, and that'll be something that we will need to basically budget for on an ongoing basis.
So is that, the $30,000 that you have listed here, is that to replace the wood chips that are currently in the community center playground?
It's, so basically, the $30,000 breaks down to roughly, roughly $20,000 for the tree work at Cambria, about $5,000 to have some additional funding above and beyond the $20,000 for Cambria just for any kind of, you know, emergency tree pruning or removal. And then roughly $5,000 for kind of certified playground mulch. That would be both at the community center as well as Cambria. So just for anticipation of your work session, you know, I have talked to one playground company just to get a ballpark idea of kind of rubberized surfacing. They do recommend that it, you know, to some degree, the area that you have to cover, we're probably covering more of an area with the mulch right now than we're obligated to in at least one of the playgrounds they mentioned. It's basically kind of a fall hazard. So you look at what's, truthfully, what's the radius where a child is likely to fall and make sure that that surface is appropriately cushioned. Any kind of rubberized surfacing, though, is very specific to the type of playground equipment that you actually install. So their recommendation was to, I mean, they're going to give me a ballpark figure for the playgrounds that we have, just to kind of start the conversation with you all, but we would likely not install any kind of rubberized surfacing unless the playground had an extended useful life. This was the same company that I talked to that also put in the new slide at Cambria. They actually said that that, that equipment is in good shape in their assessment. By contrast, and I did email Robin this, I don't know if you saw it, Robin, but they're saying that probably the playground at the community center probably will need to be replaced sometime in the next five years, is their recommendation. So once again, certainly there are grant opportunities through community parks and playground. So I think that's just something, Robin, that you and I will want to talk about with, you know, and try to look for some grant applications and just sort of kind of time. Make sure we're ahead of when that needs to be replaced, so we can see if we can get some additional.
And I, I could share a little bit more. I haven't shared this with Barb yet, but I did talk to the leadership at the Garrett Park Nursery School, and I think we're nearing our lease. I think the lease renewal is in 2026, I think.
Yeah.
But on its surface, they were thrilled with the idea of new playground equipment and said that they could help get grants. And, you know, ideally would prefer playground equipment that was more appropriate for toddlers.
Sure.
So we're excited about that idea and the new surface. But, you know, understanding, you know, we, we have to talk about our lease and everything, but.
Sure.
Very affirmative response.
Okay, thank you, Robin.
So that $5,000 for the new surfacing, the chips, is that, who's going to be spreading them? Or is that, that includes the installation?
I talked to George. So I have one quote right now from Playground Specialist. I have an email into the Deputy Director for Montgomery Parks. I don't have a good contact in park maintenance anymore, because Mike Riley, who was a long-term employee, retired. So I want to try to see, they were just in town for Wells Park and dumping a whole bunch of mulch. I'd like to see where they get it from, so at least we can get some pricing.
Because I presume we're going to have to pull away. We're going to have to pull out what's there.
Actually, what Playground Specialist recommended is that, because they'll put enough new mulch down to basically provide what would be the protective surfacing. They recommended not pulling out what's there, because what's underneath will biodegrade over time, just so we're not spending a lot of labor time removing it. They did not feel that was necessary. And I think the other thing that came up just in conversation, I haven't had a chance to talk to George Miller about this, but they actually run a, kind of a play equipment playground certification program. And I ask to be added to their list, because I think it would be helpful for one of our, at least one of our maintenance staff to go. It's a one-day program, just to have a better idea of how to identify hazards and things like that.
The nursery school parents have volunteered to pull up. We, so as it was explained to me, the way the town has done this in the past is that mulch pile is very much composed of whoever, whatever tree company is doing the shredding and whatever tree is being shredded. So sometimes you get like. So sometimes you get like, like, I call them shards, like these longs, eight to 10-inch long sticks that, you know, are shredded wood more than they are, you know, mulch. And sometimes you get something that's more chunky, more chippy. And that would, of course, those, those have always been fine, but it's these shards that created the challenge for us. So I didn't know, Barb, that someone had recommended leaving that down. But I think that, given the commentary that we're getting from the parents at the nursery school, they would prefer at least to go out there one day and pull up what we can see as these dangerous shards. I mean, these are two years old and they're close to the ground and these are longs. So we'd like to do that. So we would like to do that, even if we have to do that at our, you know, with our own staff.
Okay. I think George Miller had said he thought that he and Frank could probably spread it. I think that's yet to be determined. I just want to make sure that it's something that can happen effectively because we'll be having someone dump off the loads. And I'm not sure if, you know, if it's really worth their trying to basically start one pile. And then if we have to have two separate deliveries, it may not end up being the most cost-effective thing. It may be cheaper just to have someone else do it.
Maybe good to just check with them too, to see if they recommend putting a fabric underneath of this material. Because sometimes if you don't, it'll, it starts to mix with the dirt and it eventually disappears. When it comes to the geotextile.
Okay, I'll check underneath, Stephen.
That, that would solve the problem of having to pick up the long shards too, if there was.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. And so then the last, which shouldn't come as a surprise, the last account I was recommending a change to was road maintenance and cleaning. This is account 14.1. We obviously had the, you know, two, two weather events in January, so we've had to, you know, basically replenish our supplies since we have not yet hired a third maintenance position that, with Kayla's great help. That position got advertised last, late last week. But we do want to replenish a little bit of funding for our contractual snow plowing assistance. The other thing I just, it's noted in the memo, but, you know, we did have in this fiscal year, the first payment we've made out, at least that I could find any evidence of, or Mary could, in terms of just the driveway apron. So it's really not a capital expense for us because it's not, it's not our fixed asset. It doesn't really belong to us. So for lack of a better place of putting the $2,900 we paid out, we put it in account 14.1. So if these budget modifications are accepted, operating expenses would increase by $43,900. So if you take into account, and probably the table's easiest thing to follow, but the allocation, you know, up from reserves, the increase in revenues, and then of course, there's some additional expense. Basically, the net of all that basically means that you have $586,729 that could be allocated to capital. So in regard to Lisa's question, and you know, this is obviously a policy decision for you all. I was suggesting, based on the numbers we had at the time, obviously, there's been a slight difference with the community center. 325,000 going to Town Hall. $29,948 that will now be somewhat adjusted because of the not-to-exceed authority you gave on that contract. And then with the remaining going to, based on my recommendation to capital contingency, which was $231,781. Obviously, if the community center math changes, that number would also change somewhat. The reason I was recommending that you put roughly $232,000 into capital contingency is I think we do need to acknowledge that at this time, there's considerable uncertainty about what's going to happen with the ownership and maintenance of stormwater facilities in Garrett Park. We obviously hired a litigation attorney that you all authorized back in January. We now have a date for you all to meet with them in March. But pending that discussion and you all having an opportunity to decide what direction you want to go in that, I think it's prudent to at least set aside some funding under the assumption that we may have some responsibility for stormwater work. If you flip back earlier in your agenda packet to the financial report, it may look like we have a sizable amount of funding that's sitting there right now, but the one project that's been talked about for the last couple of years, there was at least some, you know, concept design that was done by Clark Azar. That one project alone would likely wipe out that, that entire funding. You really can't do anything in stormwater that's less than six digits. So, you know, at your retreat back at the end of October, there was also some discussion that if stormwater management became a town responsibility, that you all might want to have some, have some interest in doing a stormwater master plan. You know, very rough ballpark estimate from Clark Azar is that's probably about $100,000. And there was also some discussion at the retreat about wanting to make some investments in the parks. And Cambria came up as a specific area of interest. So, you know, pending the opportunity for you all to kind of jointly talk through those issues, get some clarity on the stormwater front. In my mind, it was appropriate just to put funding in the capital contingency to give you all maximum flexibility as you go into the FY 2025 budget process to decide what you would like to do. While at the same time, I think dedicating some funding to Town Hall, which I know is important to all of you as well. So that's kind of the budget amendment. I wouldn't say it's in a nutshell because I took quite a bit of time and I apologize for that. But I'd be happy to answer any questions that you all have.
It's just a large nut, so.
Barb, is there anything going into moving the dog park improvements forward over behind the pool?
When you all talked at the retreat, Lisa, about Cambria, I kind of included the dog park idea, or at least something in that front. But I think right now there would not be any specific funding for it, but there would be some beefed-up funding in the contingency accounting capital, should you all decide as a group to move forward with that.
Do we have anything?
Okay, thank you.
For the wall, the pool, because we're going to have to do something with that.
There is some funding. Let me flip back. Joanna and I are going to sit down this week and talk a little bit about kind of the outlook for your agendas, because that is something we need to get back to that I'd like to talk to you all about. We have some funding in the, that you allocated previously in 2023. If you flip back to your financial report, let's see if I can remember which one. It's under Public Spaces. I believe, I'm pretty sure it's 29.1.2. So we have some funding there. I think based on the most recent conversation that you all had, that would, the amount that's there would be insufficient. So once again, kind of bolstering the argument to put some funding in capital contingency as you all try to work through the various issues during your budget work session and going into 2025.
And then the other question I had regarding the archives, at one point, we had talked about possibly needing better dehumidification, better air conditioning, better climate control, whatever.
I've had some very cursory discussions with George about that. I can, he and I are going to be sitting down later this week in preparation for the budget work session and sort of making sure I have a good handle kind of out for the next five years of anything on the facilities front and vehicles. Once again, I'll try to have that information for you on February 28th.
And please talk to Claire about that as well.
I will. Yeah, I mean, there, there is something down there. I don't know if she's satisfied with it, but I'll, I know she and George have had some discussions about that. But yeah, I think that's certainly something for you all to look at. It probably wouldn't be in the, the operating account. It probably would involve something from a more capital standpoint because there is a dehumidifier down there now.
Yeah, I was just thinking, the only reason I was thinking of is because of we're reducing the operating amount. But I guess on the other hand, we'll have capital contingency.
We will.
Be able to pull it out of that.
Yeah, and I specifically just asked Claire. So the 7,500 came from her, but I would imagine probably anything you would do to really solve a problem would probably be on the capital side more than the operating anyway.
Yeah. It's good to see the Town Hall budget getting pretty substantial. Just realizing it's like, I think it was 2018 that we had a shirt about the usage of Town Hall in this room. And I think the budget was maybe one-sixth of this back then. And we've had a couple of budget periods where some members of the council were requesting to beat that number up and we're told no, it's time. So it's good to see that's finally trickled up over a million dollars. I think it was like 180 or something like that back in.
Yeah. I mean, I've obviously only been here, I guess now a little over two years, but during my tenure, it's, it's been a major commitment that the mayor and town council have made.
Yeah, and I, I think it's worth just saying out loud, by putting the amount that you recommended under capital contingency, we're not making a decision not to put that in the Town Hall. We're just leaving ourselves with some flexibility. It may end up in Town Hall capital later, but it leaves us the flexibility to potentially use it for some other more urgent need if it comes along.
And that was my intention generally. You know, I think, obviously, Town Hall is very important, but you all have also mentioned other things that you feel like you may want to tackle. To me, it was a lot easier in the optics of it to move something from capital contingency to Town Hall than once funding is in Town Hall, and then it sets the appearance that you're somehow not as committed to Town Hall by removing funding. So as you said, it doesn't mean you can't move that funding to Town Hall should you so choose.
There's quite a bit of time to finish out the design and go for permits and everything else for any kind of Town Hall to go to a bidding anyway. So there's, there's good time to see all those things kind of flesh out.
Yeah, I know when I talked to, I think I had asked Greg Wedeman at some point, how long he thought it would take to, I guess, just even get to, you know, the time where you're kind of have more detailed drawings, get through permitting. And, you know, that's probably somewhere in the nine to 12 months mark, to your point, Stephen. There's a lot of time still.
Yeah, it's probably a third of the way through the design at this point, so.
Any other questions about, about this budget amendment or ready to introduce it for us to then consider again next month? All right, who wants to make the motion?
I'll make a motion to introduce ordinance number 2024-1, the introduction of FY 2024 budget amendment number two. If I did that correctly. Also say with the adjustment of.
The community center.
Community center.
Yeah, so what that will do, I don't, I'm sorry, I don't have my calculator right handy, but yes, if you could just kind of allude to what you mentioned before with the community center, so that what that would do is it would increase the amount in the community center line item and reduce the amount in capital contingency.
By approximately $8,000.
Right, it's not a lot of money, yeah. And was there a second?
I'll second that. Those in favor?
Lisa just voted yes.
Mr. Pascal, see?
All right, I introduced.
Bye.
All right, wonderful. That is introduced and we're moving on to the next item on the agenda. The time is 8:54. And we're looking at ordinance, introduction of ordinance number 2024-2.
And this will be much briefer, I assure you. So you've, at your meetings in December and January, you talked about a possible ordinance that would require disclosure of town of Garrett Park regulations in conjunction with the sale of real property within the boundaries of the town. At the January meeting, you requested that staff place the proposed ordinance on a future meeting agenda for possible introduction. This ordinance, proposed ordinance notes the town's permitting requirements in addition to those in Montgomery County. Also, as you all directed in January, the ordinance, draft ordinance was amended to also reference the town's standing as an arboretum. Any violation of this ordinance, if it was enacted, and I did want to just note, I apologize, it would be 2024-2 in the third paragraph, I'll make that correction, would be a municipal infraction. And the penalty for each violation would be $250, and that fine could be imposed on either the owner or the agent at the town's discretion. So at this point, I would ask that you would consider introduction of the ordinance.
I wanted to suggest a very slight modification. I, I like this. I think it's good. When in the paragraph C with the disclosure language, given that the average person may not really understand what the term right-of-way means in the context of their home, their property that they're purchasing, I wonder if we could just add in parentheses, a very plain language description of what the typical right-of-way is. You know, typically a certain number of feet between the roadway extending into.
Sure, I can work with.
Property in town, something along that.
I can work with Ron Boldt.
Something like that, really simple language so that the average person would understand, oh, that is that strip of land that looks like my property, but it actually belongs to the town.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you. That's the only request I would make, and otherwise I think it's a good idea to introduce this.
Yeah, and I just want to just mention as a side note, because this was something that came up when I asked Ron Boldt to work on this. Interestingly enough, the code as, the code as it reads now technically does not prohibit someone from pruning a town tree. That's why the language talks about injuring a town tree. The other kind of strange aspect, and I generally, I can maybe, I'll send this to Sean Conlon as well, since I haven't briefed him yet. I just, just something that just came up last week. The other thing is there's also a provision in the code that allows a town resident to directly petition the Department of Natural, you have to get a tree side road permit in Maryland to. It actually allows a town resident to directly petition DNR to address the removal of a town-owned tree. Yeah, interesting. So anyway, I got a draft ordinance earlier today that would fix all that from Ron Boldt. And I, we'll be bringing it forward, but I don't think that you all probably want someone being able to directly petition to remove a tree that should all go through us. So anyway, Ron caught that as he was drafting this amendment to this ordinance. And he's drafted something to address that, that I'll bring forward at a future date after talking to Joanna about timing.
I do have one other thing, which I know I mentioned, we talked about last session was at the very end of A, where it says attach and include in his contract of sale. I wanted to have a copy delivered to the town.
I'm sorry, I can, I can add that. The other thing I just.
Copy of same delivered to town or something like that, however you want to do it. But I just think it's, it would be a good idea because we'll never know if anybody ever did it or not.
Sure, I'll ask Ron about that. I also just tangentially wanted to mention, you had had some discussion at your last meeting about some type of resident-signed attestation, you know, just. In talking to Ron Boldt about that, I think he and I both agreed that we should probably somehow incorporate that into our permitting process. We need to figure out exactly how to do that, and Kayla and I haven't had a chance to discuss it. But I didn't want you to think that we had forgotten about that, that you all sort of liked that Chevy Chase Village language. So we'll find a way to, it'll be outside of the disclosure ordinance, but we will find a way to incorporate that into our process.
Great. And just to piggyback, I think Charlie had a great point about alerting residents that where their property lying might not be where they think it is. I wonder if there's a way to, without being really long-winded in this document, like be able to alert them that the town right-of-way maps are on kind of website? Because they vary a ton. Like I think people on Arcot might be surprised that's 100 foot right-of-way. It's the only one in town. And there's like 30, 40 feet on some of those lots that is town right-of-way. As opposed to like a lot of Oxford is, it's like six or seven feet, so because the streets are out of.
Yeah, I know I was talking to a resident about the provision in the code that allows for some reimbursement for driveway aprons. And this happens to be, I won't name which street it is, but a resident who happens to have about 15 feet of right-of-way and was saying, well, why is the town only going to pay for my first four feet? Shouldn't you pay for my 15 feet? And it's like, yeah, that's not happening. But yeah, I'll, I'll try to see, see how we can flag that, Stephen. I'll work with Ron.
Too much complication, maybe just people could see it and then at least know what they're thinking too. I know at least one resident would have really probably appreciated knowing this stuff before buying because they were upset about sidewalk dropping in there.
Yeah, I mean, the other thing I can also do is, you know, I'm not sure how successful it will be because, you know, we put something in every bugle about the permitting stuff and we still have issues. But I think, Stephen, your comments, you know, might be a good idea to put something in the next edition of the bugle, just, you know, periodically just highlighting that the right-of-way maps are available online and where they can be found and.
Just a quick question, Barb. What happens if they don't pay the fine? Is there any penalty or what, who, what's the recourse?
It, it becomes, it becomes a court action, Lisa. So yeah, municipal fractions, if you might recall from the discussion at the last meeting. You know, basically there can be a fine, there can be, I mean, imprisonment usually is only left to felonies, but. but you can basically pursue a municipal infraction through the, the court system. And a lot of places do, particularly for property maintenance issues that go unresolved.
Any other changes or can we get someone to introduce this?
I'll introduce ordinance number 2024 dash two requiring real property sale disclosure.
I'll second that.
Those in favor?
Aye, aye.
Oh, wait a minute, Phil, could we, could you make that statement with the amendment language to add the additional language that we discussed?
Yes, with the addition, yes, as amended.
As amended, thank you, I'll second that. That being amended.
Like the addition on, on, on paragraph A about a copy being delivered to the town as well as some plain language description of.
And perhaps a reference to the town website, right of way maps.
Wonderful, thank you. We are moving along, the time is nine oh three and we're moving on to lighting fixture selection for Waverly.
Yeah, and I'll just be brief and I know Phil has some information he wants to share and Phil will make some introductory comments and key up your presentation. So you've had discussions of various issues surrounding lighting going, dating back to May of last year. Most recently, however, you all talked about lighting fixtures on January eighth. At that meeting, Phil presented several lighting options for the consideration of the mayor and town council. After talking about the issue, you ultimately agreed to refer the lighting fixture selection to the Garrett Park Historic Preservation Committee for a recommendation. They did review that matter as you requested and on February second, committee chair Nancy Walts submitted their recommendation on how the town should proceed, in their opinion, with the selection of a lighting fixture. The Garrett Park Historic Preservation Committee's recommendation is provided as an attachment one. And I'm going to just read Nancy's nutshell comment, which is in a nutshell, the committee recommends a design matching or analogous to the teardrop style light adopted by the town in nineteen ninety-seven. Alternatively, if that teardrop style cannot be acquired on a mount suitable for Waverly, we recommend adopting the style of pole lights fitted on Strathmore Knowles in connection with the traffic calming renovation at the turn of this century. And I know, Stephen, you're obviously the liaison, you may want to add something. And I know Phil has a presentation he would also like to make.
Yeah, I think the committee did great work on this. I missed the January meeting, but I was able to catch the last one and there, a lot of this was kind of becoming synthesized. It was looked at a couple of different ways. But there's some great points I think that were made, like I, I wasn't even aware of this, the whole change of the lights being done in nineteen ninety-seven. So there was a lot of work looking at all that. And there, there are a couple of lights over in that Waverly area. I think one it is the teardrop light now and one is still the Cobra headlight. So I concur with that. The committees asked that the town try to find a way to get the rest of, get rid of the rest of the Cobra lighting. Granted, that's going to be a separate project than doing Waverly, but if we could do it relatively soon after or with the Waverly changes, that'd be great. I'm not sure what's involved in doing that. Probably go through a PEPCO, but.
PEPCO snuck a few in is what happened.
Okay, it's probably easier than, easier than just saying, but you know, it'd be great if we could take that up in the near future. And just a synopsis, it, it seemed like there was a concern about going and having just, you know, all kinds of different lights at all different places and trying to keep in some sort of consistency. I was trying to pull it back up again, but I, I did notice that like they were recommending if, if it's possible to get something that's similar to the teardrop lights around the utility pole, get something that maybe is right for the scale of Waverly, so it's not totally different. And if that can't be done, do something that's more like Strathmore. And we're showing it to Phil earlier, I can't get it to come back up again, but I noticed Montrose Parkway that was down a couple of years ago, they have something that's pretty similar to a teardrop light. And I have a feeling that there's probably a plethora of those in the lighting catalogs around. And one of the interesting things, I'm not sure if they put it in here, but one of the things that one of the committee members was saying is it could be, there might even be fixtures and I've seen these kind of fixtures more in a modern fixture, but it might be available on like a teardrop lighting is maybe something that has the teardrop light that lights up the street and kind of that general area. But it could have more of like a side light out of the, like the backside of it that is almost like a baller light, which I think could do kind of what Phil originally had the idea of kind of doing some, you know, kind of calm lighting at the footpath too. So it might be able to kind of be the best of both worlds out of that light. But even if it's not, it's probably not out of the general arc to do it. So that was just a side thought with it. I think that was it, because I put down in my notes, the notes about the, like the, the alignment of the sidewalk, but that was covered separately. But there was a fair amount of talk about that one at the end of the last meeting. So yeah, I think great, great work by the committee, I think, to kind of really think this through. And it, it was, it's a little tricky one because it's, a lot of people think of historic preservation. It's, you know, it's like, it's, sometimes it's about protecting the setting for things that aren't there. It's not always about protecting something that is there. So here we weren't really looking at, here's this hundred year old light, how do we preserve it? It was more, how do we do something that's kind of, it really is compatible with that, that area of town and town in general, so.
Phil, you want me to bring up your presentation? Okay. Let me just, let me know when you want me to move it, Phil.
You go to the next.
Okay.
So I just updated the presentation a bit, if you go to the next slide, please.
Yeah, it's not moving for some reason. Sure, why?
It's a PDF, so I don't know if it's going to be a, it won't be a slide.
Guys, Phil, sorry.
Okay, so this is just to, yeah, go to the next one after that. Okay, and keep, that's just showing the sidewalk, so we know. Okay, I just wanted to bring up, so this is some of the stuff that we considered originally and included things like, you know, without reading the whole thing, basically it included some things like making sure we had enough light for the pathway because the idea was to light the pathway, to make sure that we don't have any sort of, you know, Cobra or box head type of streetlights, which I think everybody agrees on, and to have something that would also be somewhat quaint, I think a little, and you know, would work well with the town. And not have light going everywhere, including into people's houses, you know, and so forth. So if we can go to the next one. The other thing that we looked at was to make sure that we try and get something that didn't contribute to sky glow, meaning that we didn't have a lot of uplight and a lot of glare and also would be efficient and conceivably could have a dimmer attached if we wanted to do something like that. And so it was trying to get away from, from the big broad lighting fixtures and go to something that was more concentrated. And so to that end, I'm going to, if we go to the next one. So this is what's the existing ones on Strathmore. And they, ours is green, obviously, but other than that, why? They sit on top of, actually I made that wrong, it's not ten foot poles. Well, it's twelve foot to the top of the lights, ten foot pole. So the things are pretty darn tall, put out a ton of light. I'm not sure that was necessarily the best way to go. I looked to see if I could find something else that was actually smaller, like maybe a half size version of this or something like that. At least immediately I couldn't find anything. And it also appeared that the ones that we have weren't available anymore, but Barb just told me that they were able to still get them, which is a good thing. I would assume that we would probably be able to get something in an LED anyway. But just to give you an idea, this is the size of what we've got now, which I think is rather big for the area, but you know, we can go from there. Then the next, if we go to the next slide. So this shows the same type of light fixture, but if you look at the bottom right corner there, which you see is the bug rating or the, the, basically the back light, the uplight and the glare. And these will definitely not be dark sky. They're not going to be dark sky approved because they've got a ton of uplight. So that's something that we should consider. I mean, we originally talked about trying to do something that might be dark sky approved and I don't think that's a, you know, this one's definitely not going to pass. I mean, it's, it's ratings out of five, as you can see, one's three out of five, one's four out of five. So not great. The back light's not so bad because, as Stephen had mentioned, you know, we're trying to actually like two areas, one area is in front, which is going to be where the, the people get out of a car and the other side is going to be where people are walking down the path. So the uplights, or I'm sorry, the back light's not so bad. The glare is not wonderful, but I think we could deal with it, but it's the, the uplight that's really kind of not so good for us, especially if you're trying to keep that area a bit dark.
Were you able to look at the, at the, the ones that the historic preservation recommended that the?
Well, this is one of them because this is base, basically, this would be the same thing as on Strathmore. And then if we go to the next slide. Okay, so now this is a teardrop style. And I'll get to the, get to the one, first thing in a second. But what you see is the size of the two lights that we have now. Actually, ours is the, is the one on the right with the, the ninety degree turn in it. But you can get a pendant style that points down. These things are pretty tall also, they're kind of big. They don't, again, they don't have great uplight. But as Stephen had mentioned, we were just talking earlier about it. You can get them in kind of a neat looking fixture rather than the mountain on the side of the telephone pole. You can get at least something that's like a U shape, which makes them look a little bit better. We can get them with a household shield or a house side shield. Basically what that is essentially a piece of perforated metal that has you, it blocks the light from going places you don't want, like inside somebody's windows.
May I, based on that depiction, ask Stephen a question? Do you think the Historic Preservation Committee could support the gooseneck with the teardrop that is similar to other lights that they referenced, referenced in their report? So the fixture there, to me, looks like what I thought I read they were recommending, but the gooseneck might be a little bit of a departure. So I was just wondering if that would be discussed at all.
Not, not, not really, so it's probably good to share this back and then see, I think it was the, they were probably focusing more on the, on the fixture itself, but I guess the ones we have, it's almost like a standard, it comes out like an angle off the utility pole and it drops that teardrop light.
Right.
I don't know if something like that is available with this teardrop. It, it could be, you know, maybe that.
Oh, our teardrop is the, so our teardrop is the one, is the one with the right angle bend on it. It's just that you don't have the rest of the pole on it that sticks out from the telephone pole.
Ah, okay.
If you look at ours, you'll see it looks exactly the same, it's just it's got a big long pipe that sticks out from the telephone pole.
It's like six, some of them are like ten feet, I guess, that had to get further. And I, I did show this to Phil earlier, I don't know, you probably can't see it's microscopic from there, but like these are ones that are on Montrose Parkway. So there's probably, and that's like a different timeline, there's probably, there's probably some variation where you can get different styles of pole.
And I have nothing against the gooseneck, I just think it would be good to get the committees.
Yeah, I think. I think they, they had a version to like more of like a barn style light, but like that's, they were really in favor of doing this teardrop thing. But I, I'm not really sure that the gooseneck would, they're thinking might be.
Well, one thing is if you don't go, I guess, if you're concerned about that, maybe I just need to sit down with them and I can go through some of the stuff that they've got out there because I don't think we want to be out there planting more telephone poles to accommodate these things. So I would think we need some type of decorative sort of thing that would be relatively small footprint that would hold us, whatever it is that we're going to pick up.
It needs to be like a small scale, like a appropriately scale kind of pole. But I guess what I'm, what I'm saying is there, there might be different ways of attaching the pole to that light than the gooseneck. It might be more of like a T, it might be an L shaped one, I, I don't.
Yes, we have all of those. All of those.
Right. Yeah, and the kind of pole that we have on Strathmore. Strathmore is a much bigger sort of avenue, so those poles are appropriately scaled. Something that big in this block would be just too big.
That's what I think too.
I think Phil normally, Phil normally had said something about pruning up to like, I think it was sixteen feet or eighteen feet or something like that. So it'd be nice to get a light that kind of fits in that little void between trees that doesn't go up and get stuck in it. So I think it's all, can, can work out.
So are we, are we in agreement about?
And like, well, let me go on to another slide. Go on to two more, okay, so. Going back to the, the goosenecks, going back to the other style, I wanted to point out the fact that there is precedent for having the type of farm or barn house light. As you can see, there's three of them installed on the backside of Penn Place and there's two similar ones which are installed on the side of Penn Place. They look roughly like the thing that you see on the far right. And also, if you go to the next slide, historic Kensington has basically the same style of these barn style lights because that's basically what was put into train stations. And so that's where I was coming from when I, I thought that we might go with something different because it's, you know, it's, it's something that would match with what was there on the side of the train station, what is there on Penn Place right now. Otherwise, I'm fine with looking for new poles and smaller teardrops if we have to go down that road.
It'd probably good to send this back to the HPC too, just so.
Oh, yeah, please do.
Yeah.
And I can also look up different teardrops. But this is where it was, I just wanted to point, this is the last slide of the series. I just wanted to point out the fact that there is some precedent. I mean, we already have this style lamp on the side. I think if I go look at the picture out of the old station, you'll probably find out they use the same thing there because they were pretty standard lamps for that.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think those are fair points, Phil. I, I do think though that this stretch is somewhat removed from our train station and the, the Penn Place building is a much different lighting fixture location than a street lamp location. So I can understand why the committee was kind of connecting this stretch more as a street lamp look as opposed to comparing it to the Penn Place building fixtures, exterior building fixtures.
Is there another slide, Phil?
Um, I think there's one. Oh, well, this just shows, so yeah, this is just basically what I would have proposed, which it sounds like is probably not going to go, but anyway, that's.
So in terms of asking the committee to look again, are we, what are we asking them? Are we, are we supporting the, their recommendation to go with the teardrop style? And we're just asking them what they think about the various options in terms of poles, like whether the gooseneck or an angle or rectangle, I'm not even sure what the other options are. But what is it that we're asking them? Because it's, you know, this isn't slowing us down from a construction perspective, you know, in terms of getting the sidewalk put in.
I thought we want to get a result.
I'd like to get that, yeah, I'm, I'm ready for this to, to be resolved. So, so what is it that we're asking, specifically asking Historic Preservation?
So I just want to verify, Phil, I think I heard you say there are versions of the teardrop that can meet our basic criteria for, I can't remember what you called it, the, to avoid the up.
There are, there are not, that's the problem.
I thought you said that there were ways to.
Only to keep it out of somebody's house. There's a shield that'll keep it out of somebody's house, which is currently what we have. If you look at, like the one in front of my house, if you look at that one, you'll see it's got a screen in front of it and part of it will keep the light out of somebody's house.
But if the teardrop is pointing down, it doesn't meet that criteria?
No, because if you look at the bug rating, which you see is there's still a lot of uplight.
So, but this is what we have throughout the rest of town.
Right.
I mean, not that, you know, but bad, just because we already have bad, if that's the determination. But you know, it, it would be consistent with what we already have.
There, there are variations on a teardrop. I'm not sure that their, their thinking was it has to absolutely positively match that to a T. But they were, I think you even said in there, and that analogous to that, like it, it was just like.
Yeah.
This reminds me, I pulled up the train station in Kensington, looks like they have a plethora. They have, they have like, like big gas lamps, they have teardrops with more of a dark sky shield on them. And the, the ones, I think Phil showed the picture of, they're around the other way at the front, they're probably attached to the building. So it's kind of a hodgepodge over there, but.
Okay, I just want to be clear what we're asking them for so that we can try to, you know, not, not have to, you know, you know, keep coming back and forth.
If we're looking, if we're basically, I was gonna, I would ask that they reconsider the barn light, but it, it sounds like that we're not so interested in the barn light. If that's the, if that's the case, then I would suggest. If that's the, if that's the case, then I would suggest that I propose several versions of this teardrop thing, one kind of like what Kensington has with the shield, which if you go back to the picture I had at Kensington Station, you'll see it's a tall one.
Do you want me to bring that back up, Phil?
If you don't mind.
Sure.
If that's not glass too, it looks like this one may have just been vandalized.
Um, most of them now are acrylics, you say.
Yeah, this, the ones they had might have been glass.
Yeah, because our stuff was glass, but now even the new teardrops are all acrylic.
Like this bird.
Can you tell me where you'd like?
Right there. If you look right in the center, it's, it's kind of hard to see here, but that, the tall one there that's right in front of eighteen ninety-one sign, I think it is.
Yeah.
Something like that where it's got a shield around it, so it would help with the it would help um with the light cutoffs, you don't get the upward, and it also has a teardrop nose on it. I mean, I could certainly look at that, or um, otherwise, we can just look at, uh, I've got, uh, I saw just a plethora of of various lights, you know, things we could put on, keys, bars, and this is and that's.
Is this something that you can um work with historic preservation before their next meeting so that they can sort of see what you're thinking of and actually pass judgment on that? Um, my my concern is just
No, that's what I.
Back here, we got requests, you know, other other options, other, you know, um, things to consider. I just kind of want to.
I would propose doing exactly that. I mean, either the whole committee or some subset thereof, I mean, I can get together with Steve and figure out who's the best people to talk to to come up with something.
Okay.
Phil, just because I I admit I know nothing about lighting, so we'll start with that. There had originally been some discussion and a desire to light like halfway out into the street. Do these lights do that? I just don't know enough about them to.
They would. It depends because there's five different patterns that you can get on this thing. So one of the groups of patterns would do that. And that was one of the things I was fairly concerned with, was trying to trying to make sure that we don't go too far. I mean, halfway into the street will
Yeah.
Would be.
I mean, that's something you all need to discuss because previously you said you wanted to light to the middle of the street, and I don't not my decision, just as you all talk about what your goal are, goals are, that may influence what Phil shares as well.
So I mean, maybe after we get some better sense of of what light it should be before we place an order or make a definitive decision.
Protometrics can be ruined.
Protometrics for that, yeah.
But I think the first thing is I just need to sit with one or more people from historic presence, kind of.
Yeah, yeah.
That's a good.
Right, and I.
Put out what's out there.
And I don't know to what extent the the historic preservation committee considered the criteria we established to to begin with, which included trying to conform with the dark sky criteria to the extent we could.
Right.
Um, but also um trying to light, you know, at least maybe the first parked car.
Right.
A parked car, even if not the whole half of the street. And I think we also said something that conforms with the historic nature of the neighborhood. Those were in my memory, the three main criteria.
Yeah, they were, they were thinking of all three of those. It seemed like they really agreed to it. To the point where at the very end of the discussion, the last time I said, well, we're gonna be underneath a tree canopy, you could say that maybe dark sky is not as important there as in an open field, and I got a lot of pushback right away. No, no, we want dark skies. Uh, or we think, we agree with dark skies. So um, so yeah, I think they're very much in line with Phil's original recommendations on and ours, all of this committee's or this council's recommendations on those three things.
Okay, let's see, I'm gonna sit with, um, we'll try and get this thing
Great. Thank you for your work and research on this. It's been a lot.
Yeah, I'm not trying to drag it out. I just wanted to get something that works, looks good.
Yeah, all right. I just wanted to note, Lisa had to log off. She um had spotty wifi where she's staying, so she had gone to a restaurant that was closing at nine thirty. So I just noticed she has dropped off.
Got kicked out.
Being rowdy.
Okay.
All right, time is nine twenty-six. And we have a briefing on the compost pilot program from the city town manager, Ken Bueker.
The beautiful thing about this is you don't have to make a decision tonight. Kind of high level overview, when council had rolled out this program at the level of support you wanted to offer to households, we could support a maximum of one hundred and thirteen households. We have not seen anywhere near that level of engagement. We have seen good, consistent steady upticks, but we are still hovering at seventy-four total participating households. We started with thirty-one households when we absorbed all the private contracts into the one-year pilot program. What I'd like council to be thinking of, and part of why you're getting this briefing now, is we have the budget work session in not quite two weeks. And I will be asking at that point for council to give direction of if you intend to continue the pilot program.
Or convert it from pilot to.
Permanent.
Yeah.
Better way to phrase it. Um, we do per our contract have the ability to issue three one-year extensions under what we originally bid out. We only received one bidder on that project. That was compost crew. I can say from an administrative standpoint, once we got up and running with them, it has been very organized, very orderly. I have not heard any issue from residents. I have not encountered any issue with compost crew. At this point, it's kind of a self-running program. But what I'd like to is, does council have specific questions about participation? About funding allocated to it that they would like to have answers to when we discuss this in full on the twenty eighth?
Well, it would be good to know if we continue at the way, the way we are with the fifty percent monthly service fee paid for the seven gallon container, um, how much an allocation we would need to put into our budget.
Um, so we cover fifty percent of the equivalent of the seven gallon, whether the participant has seven gallons or eleven, or sorry, twelve gallons as their base. Council had allocated fifteen thousand total for the one-year pilot program. Some of that funding we are anticipating to be redirected to cover the um increased tipping charges that we encountered. Um, council did a contract amendment for key sanitation, the trash vendor, back in August of twenty twenty-three. Um, unless we see an aggressive spike in participation in the compost pilot, we are going to have untapped funds for this year that will be directed elsewhere. So you could continue to allocate fifteen thousand dollars. That's been more than enough to support the level of participation we have. If council has other projects in mind they would like to divert funding to, you, I think, could very easily drop the support to covering only eighty households. We have not yet hit eighty. At the rate that we have seen an uptick, we might not hit eighty before the end of fiscal year twenty-four. Um, at eighty households per month, you would be looking at, I went to say pardon me while I do some math very quickly. You'd be looking at about eleven thousand dollars being needed as an annual funding. Obviously, if we were to see an uptick, I could come back to council, let's say, eight months from now and say, hey, everyone's going crazy for compost, please reallocate funding to help support this.
But if we left it at, say, fifteen, then it would just be adding to the carryover if you don't get up to that number, or or is there any kind of administrative um hassle from having that extra capacity in there?
I don't see any administrative hassle from having that extra funding, and if that's how council prefers to operate, that's all we need, kind of the direction from you all on the twenty-eight. But given that much of tonight's conversation has centered around making sure that we are prioritizing funding for projects that have been I won't say languishing on the to-do list, but have had much attention over the years. I did want to make sure council was aware of an option to still offer a program without committing quite as much funding.
I mean, in the scheme of things, it is a pretty small amount of funds, right? And your proposal is for this year to go ahead and allot that overage towards our overruns for the regular refuse collection, correct?
Um, yeah, I mean, it does seem like it'd be nice if we could perhaps get some community feedback um, before we finalize our budget.
Um, and perhaps also see if there's any way we can provide some additional education about the benefits of participation. That might be something, um, I might just reach out to the citizens association. Anything we can do to make sure we're getting the word out.
There is a regular reminder that appears in Town Manager Matthews' um monthly viewbook.
Hearing it from someone else might be helpful. Yeah, I mean, I think that is, I do appreciate that you do that, and I don't, I don't know, maybe even just like putting a little notice on the bulletin board might capture different people's attention. Didn't Taylor, didn't we get a testimonial from somebody? I just remember seeing something either on the town forum or.
Back when this program was being rolled out in May of twenty twenty-three, there were a handful of testimonials on the Garrett Park town forum, listserv, prison compost crew. Those originated from folks who had private service contracts prior to the program. Um, some of them did seem to be pretty persuasive. Um. So generally, happy to look at other options for spreading the word. Any support you can offer with speaking with Citizens Association would be appreciated.
Maybe we could get GP Can involved. Be like, hey, guys, you wanna see if you can promote this a little bit?
Yeah.
Um, Melissa, I think.
Yeah. Um, question for the elected officials. Is it of interest to have me reach out to our current participants that ask for their opinion on how the program has worked, particularly targeting those who joined with the pilot?
The non, yeah, the non-previous users.
Hmm. Yeah, I think that would be great if you have time. I can pretty easily get that contact information, and I think what I might do is just
um, send out a quick survey monkey poll, just kind of being like, hey, as we look at it.
Are you using it as much as you were expecting to?
Hmm. Um, I do want to highlight, I had confirmed with Jackie, my point of contact for compost crew. Once people are enrolled in the program, no one has dropped it. How actively engaged they are is a different question, but once they're in, they tend to stay in, which I think is a testament to the value people find in the overall program. So are there any other questions or outreach that you want to see happen in the run-up to the meeting on the twenty eighth?
A cup, a couple of quick questions. Um, so one is, didn't we already address the sixty-nine hundred dollars? I think we had to move some money around or something, or am I wrong?
Um, what we said back in August was that we it it was appearing that we would have some savings from um the pilot program that we could apply, and if not, we would tap the contingency account.
Okay. I mean, to me, looking at the fact it's four thousand dollars and we may get some more people, I would just assume let it let the four thousand ride. It's not like it's a huge quantity. The money's gonna break us some. So I would just leave it alone and we'll see what happens. I mean.
This will have something on the list of things to discuss at the, at the budget.
Right. Which will be very shortly, but even so, I'll still make the same comment, which is pretty much like you know, let it ride. Maybe we can get some people encouraged, and maybe we can encourage some people who are doing composting in their backyard to consider doing it this way. So we're not.
Anything.
To get rodents away, keep rodents away. But in any case, I would be inclined to just leave it alone.
And I appreciate you sharing your thoughts. Councilor Puskowski, I think you're the only one who hasn't said anything. Any questions that you'd like to have answers to, or?
I think I started it by making that first, first comment, but um, but I'm kind of in a similar, that's why I asked that question at first. I, um, similar to what Phil was just saying, I wondered if it's, that's the kind of thing maybe it makes sense to kind of let, let it ride, even if there's extra capacity of what we think we're gonna need this year. Because the alternate might be if we only have a little bit of extra and all of a sudden there's a surge. Maybe people are talking, and then we get twenty new people, then all of a sudden it becomes a hassle to pump more funding into it. Um.
That's like the aspirationalness of leaving the funding in the middle. We can still get those additional fifty or whatever it is, forty-five.
Right.
Yeah.
I'm coming up with thirty-eight potential households that we have.
Madam Daly?
Yeah, hi. Um, we, we use that, and you know, we basically, sometimes we don't even have garbage at all that week. You know, we definitely don't need two pickups. And we, we do very well with just one plus the bulk, plus the compost. And I just talk to neighbors and we all kind of marvel that we have two pickups. Does any, do we ever look to reducing the pickups?
That is a third rail in this town. You want to talk about that?
All right, I don't want to raise the rockets. I, I, but, but people I talk to are all like, yeah, we don't put that much garbage out.
But do you, um, does the nursery school use compost crew?
I don't think so.
Because?
I don't know anything about that.
They should.
I think there's a question of whether or not a non-residential address would be eligible to participate. It might be something where if the nursery school is interested in joining, I would have to just reach out to compost crew directly and say, we would like to make a special exception.
Okay.
Please capture this, because one of the big setup things when we were transitioning was verifying which addresses, particularly along our kind of outer bounds were eligible.
Yeah, yeah, that, yeah.
And we have gotten some questions over the past not quite year from Garrett Park Estates and other folks in the region who are interested. I have had to politely turn them down and say, unfortunately, that's.
Paying taxes and.
Haven't quite said it that way, but the general consensus is this is a town of Garrett Park resident offering. Unfortunately, if you are not a resident here, I cannot extend this to you.
Right, but it is a building that the town owns, so if, if compost crew is amenable and and the the school is interested.
I don't think compost crew is going to object to having another address to pick up from and therefore get paid for. Um.
I, I can ask them, but I, I wasn't commenting on their behalf. I was commenting on my personal behalf. It would be a good lesson for the kids and, and they always like things like that, so I can ask them, but.
Yes, it's one more fun truck to drive by.
Yeah, yeah.
But it's at like four in the morning.
Robin, you know where to find me after that conversation.
Yeah, I, I'll ask them and see if they're interested before you bother asking the compost crew.
Oh, great. Uh, wonderful, let's see, ba, ba, ba. Closing in on the end of our meeting soon. Time is nine thirty-nine. Uh, town election.
Yeah, this will be very quick. Um, so this year's town election is going to, will be held on Monday, May sixth. Um, just as a reminder, voters will be selecting candidates for the office of mayor and uh two seats on the um town council. Those are the seats currently held by Geraldine and Lisa. Um, those elected on May sixth will take office at the next town council meeting or May thirteenth, and their term of office will be two years. Um, as you likely recall, um, individuals may be nominated for elective office either at a meeting that shall occur at least thirty days prior to the election or by petition signed by ten registered voters and filed with me at least twenty-one days before the date of the town election. Um, so I reached out um to the citizens association. They have kindly agreed to host this year's nominating meeting again. Um, they wanted to try something different, um, and basically to, in an effort to um, get greater participation than we historically have held the meeting like around seven thirty, eight o'clock at night. Um, they would like to hold the nominating meeting at five thirty PM on Wednesday, March twentieth. Um, I had some discussion with the the judges about the change to get their thoughts. I think they have tremendous respect understandably for the citizens association, and we're not opposed to um, trying a different time just to see how it goes. Um, we did have also some back and forth with the citizens association about um kind of the format of the meeting, and I think the judges um, you know, felt fairly strongly, and I I did as well, um, that we should at least offer the hybrid option because there are people who are um, you know, may still be at work or maybe driving home. Um, you know, it's not like it's an onerous burden, but um, it's, it's much easier to get nominated at the nominating meeting than it is to have to do it by petition, so trying to somewhat level the playing field. Um. So as proposed, we would be holding the nominating meeting at five thirty PM on Wednesday, March twentieth at town hall. As I mentioned, it would be in a hybrid uh fashion. We're gonna kind of play around with the room setup to try to make it a little bit as Steve Walker said, he doesn't want to feel like he's talking to a camera. He wants to feel like he's talking to his neighbors, which is understandable. The deadline for submitting candidate nominations by petition would be four PM on Wednesday, March twenty-seventh. Um, basically, just as we did last year, we would like to give ourselves a little bit more than thirty days to finalize the slate of candidates. It's just helpful all the way around for the rest of the steps that happen um for the election from a candidate standpoint. It also gives them a little bit more time to know who all is running in addition to themselves. Um, the citizens association has also set a date for this year's candidates forum. It will be held at seven thirty PM on Wednesday, April twenty fourth, assuming you all agree. Um, I, as I mentioned in the memo, we um, have used elect tech, um, the optical scanner technology the past couple of years. Um, we have in funds in the budget, um, FY twenty twenty four budget, um, to use their services again. Um, so what I'm looking for from you all is basically just, um, as we have in the past, you all by charter and by code have to essentially approve the recommended election process dates. Um, seeking your concurrence with the dates I've outlined in the memo and I just recapped for you so that we can update the town website and the um, send out notifications via GPML and the town forum.
Any questions?
I'm, I'm sorry, you may have said this. Why will the nominating meeting be at five thirty?
Um, the citizens association felt very strongly about it. Um.
They, they were hoping, I think, to tap into um, citizens on their way home from work wanting to not get.
Get home, homework, kids. So they were trying to catch people before dinnertime, I think, is what their goal was. We did, the judges asked me to extend an offer to the citizens association where we haven't worked out any details. Um. You know, I don't think it'll be like a dinner, but at least some kind of, you know, if someone wants to come in, get some snacks and, you know. Yeah, just make it a little bit more social. Um, but yeah, their goal is to try this and see if they get more participation at the nominating meeting.
Okay. Didn't quite follow.
Yeah, so we don't know if it'll work, but you don't know until you try.
And if it's not successful.
Well.
It'll, you know.
Try, try a different format.
And, and it doesn't preclude anybody from running.
Right. I think. Yeah. And one of the things that the judges asked is this, I know this was a question that came up, um, kind of after the nominating meeting that was posed to me last year. Um, is the judges asked that I emphasize in communications that someone can choose to nominate themselves, um, you know. Um, cause that, that did come up from a prospective candidate last year. He said, well, I didn't know I could nominate myself. Is everybody okay with?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Great. Uh, let's see, town updates, council member Bennett, the Arboretum Committee.
Okay, um, very quickly for the Arboretum Committee, um, they will be holding their next meeting next Wednesday. That's um, the twenty first. Uh, one of their um, major efforts right now is working on a proposal to revise the town's tree protection ordinance. So I was thinking, Barb, if you would be willing to share that draft that Ron Bold has developed for that small subsection, I think that would be helpful to the committee um, before that meeting. Um, and then also, um, I would expect that the arborists will be um, beginning to talk about the spring planting development um, at this next meeting if people have an interest in that. And then my other update, if there are no questions on the Arboretum Committee, is for the St. Angela Hall uh, development site on Strathmore Avenue. Um, the county planning board held a hearing on January eighteenth. And um, the result of that hearing was that they approved an amendment to the preliminary plan for the development of the site. And uh, as we talked about, I think it was in September when we first learned this proposed change, the developer, um, they've had a change in the, the construct of their partnership and the assisted living center partner has dropped out of the partnership. So the new development will just be residential housing. It will no longer have the assisted living center as part of the development. And so what they proposed uh, is to um, add a few more single family detached homes across the frontage of the property and a few more town homes. Uh, so that the total cap of homes to be added is a hundred and twenty five. And what will front Strathmore Avenue will be seventeen single family homes. All of the town homes would be behind that. Uh, this will also result in one fewer curb cuts. So uh, one fewer entrance to the development. There will only be two. There were going to be three. The third was going to be the commercial entrance for that assisted living center. And that was something that the town had pushed hard against trying to get removed. So I think from our perspective, that is a, a, a win um, to have fewer curb cuts and have less commercial traffic going in and out of that site. Um, looking at my notes here. There will still be a traffic light at the main entrance of the development. It will not align with Stillwater Avenue. So the second entrance of the development will align with Stillwater Avenue. That is one thing they're going to do that they expect will improve traffic in the area. But the traffic light is expected to be at the the entrance, the main entrance, which is somewhere between Flanders and Stillwater. And it will have a left hand turn with a traffic light. I, in talking to the representative from the estates, we, as, we don't know this for sure, but I think if the traffic light were at Stillwater, there's probably not enough room to keep traffic from, when the light is red, from backing up all the way to um, three fifty five. So uh, we surmise, that's why that was not really given any serious consideration by um, the DOT. There will still be a pedestrian shared use pathway between the development and um, Kennelworth Avenue and Garrett Park. So that will provide for a pedestrian pathway all the way um, from three fifty five through Garrett Park.
Did they make any concessions about the width of that?
That was not part of the discussion at all. So it's still there and they still, uh, as I understand it, there is still ongoing negotiations between the private property owner, which is, you know, the, the diocese there, um, and the developer. If they are not able to come to a um, agreement within a certain time period, then the developer, developer will be required to pay a certain sum to the county and then the county will be responsible for ensuring that the pathway is installed. I think, you know, from our perspective, it would be beneficial if all the construction is completed at one time. So um, I'm hopeful that it will all be resolved so that the construction can, you know, occur together rather than sequenced later after the county come, you know, I would hate for them to do the construction and for the county to have to come back behind and take care of the sidewalk.
Barb, is this something that would be good to mention to the uh, the executive county executive Thursday night?
I think so. Yeah, that would be great. Um, and then finally, we don't know a, a definite schedule, but the, the developers have said that their goal is to get all of their permits in place by the fall of twenty twenty four and to be able to begin construction by twenty twenty five. If everything goes smoothly according to their plans.
Any questions?
Thanks for keeping on top of that.
So, um, yeah, would be good to get some feedback on that sidewalk, because it is a, it is a strange sticking point. I think it's um, it was pretty egregious with the, the, um, I think was being asked for. I can't remember what it was, like eight or ten feet, like like a bicycle path and all. It's like, it's strange to go from five feet to ten, back to like seven or whatever it is by symphony place. Hopefully cooler has prevailed on that or, or at least somebody really looks at it. But I think it's, those kind of things are just tough. There's somebody that's kind of in a bubble somewhere at the county level. Yeah. And they're just stuck on this idea that the whole world is gonna be dominoes that flip to that. And I think the Georgetown, old Georgetown road bicycle pass are um, example of that kind of.
Yeah, I mean, the bottom line, it is going to be connecting to Garrett Park's sidewalks, which there is no possibility of expanding those to be wider.
No.
And the, the pathways that are already existing.
Right. And if it eases the burdens on the county by getting it done, by making that concession, if that helps with negotiations with property owners, yeah.
Yeah, so I'm hopeful some sort of uh, agreement can be brought, brought in place.
Sometimes it's all it takes is somebody from the, the county level that's more of a decision maker to go confront that person who's stuck on something that doesn't really fit and then tell them that they need to get realistic. So.
We're having um, a crucial dinner on Thursday night with the county executive. So.
That's great. Thank you. There is one other point I forgot to put in my notes. Um, if it's of interest to folks, one new issue that had not been raised previously that was raised at the hearing by um, I think a, a group of alumni from the Academy of the Holy Cross, that they are interested in having a more visible um, memorial of some sort to um, to commemorate the history of that area and, and the school. Um, so there was no firm commitment made. Um, but the, the developers indicated that they are working with the sisters to um, put some sort of commemoration on the site, but it likely won't be right on Strathmore Avenue. It will probably be setback on the property somewhat.
Uh, since council member Max is enjoying the Bahamas, I will do the uh, the archives committee, um, a message from Claire McDonald. Uh, let's see, there's a new exhibit in the lobby of the post office that shows street names in Garrett Park. How uh, their inspiration coming from Scottish authors or Walter Scott. Coming up, I think it's next, or no, uh, during the archives committee meeting on January twenty fourth, there were lots of discussion about about how the archives and the committee will support the, the Chevy House tour coming up in April. As well as they, they also discussed the, their budget request for twenty twenty five and a new oral history subcommittee. And um, there are, let's see. Claire wanted to mention that she welcomes new donations to the archives, especially materials related to town clubs and organizations and print or digital photographs. Ideally, they would be labeled uh, and other town events and people. Um, and we communicate with Claire about that. And also, um, she's going to be reaching out to some residents who provided oral histories ten, twenty, thirty years ago, but didn't complete consent forms. So folks who took part in the oral history process uh, still need to give permission for those to be used. So that's that. Anything else before we adjourn? Okay, well, time is, um, yeah, I'm sorry. Oh, forgot to mention that part about, go ahead, um, uh, about uh, Letitia Yendel.
Yes.
Uh, we forgot to mention, thank you. That she passed away.
Yes.
In the last few weeks.
Yeah, and there will be, I'm just pulling up the date. Um, and I will be sending something out. It has changed. Okay, that's news to me. When is it now? You know?
It is now going to be the third Sunday in March. That should be the twenty fourth. Originally, there had been talk of doing a memorial in the month of February. The friend who was organizing it was finding some challenges with finding a date that worked for the majority of Letitia's loved ones and colleagues at the vulgar library. There can be an announcement later. She is asking that anyone who's interested in attending kind of RSVP. She is planning to do kind of light finger foods and some lemonade such to commemorate at the memorial. So that is on the upcoming calendar, I will email council and the mayor the date. And then I believe we had talked about sending out a Garrett Park Forum announcement, but I can't recall where we left that, Barb.
Well, good thing I didn't, because I didn't realize it. So, yeah. Um, yeah, I, I had offered to send something out. Um, so I'll touch base with um, the organizer and just make sure I'm clear on the details and what she would like sent out.
Thank you. Okay. Well, thank you all. And uh, this meeting is adjourned.